All right, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Joan, if you prepared a flag for us. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States, the needs of America, and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God.
With liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
Need to shut off.
A little feedback.
Yeah, I'm using a different. I'm so sorry. And can somebody?
Joe, you can mute one of them.
Yeah, I would like my phone. So can you mute me?
It sounds good now.
I muted your picture and now the phone looks good.
Oh, that's what I should have done. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, so sorry about that.
All right, so I'll start with announcements and board openings. So New Year, New Year's Resolution, hopefully some people will join a board or committee for their New Year's Resolution. Maybe that's what's gonna happen this time. Finance Advisory Committee has two associate openings. Conservation Commission has one opening. Hamilton Historic District Commission has one opening. Open Space Committee has two openings. Hamilton Space, I'm sorry, Hamilton Planning Board has one associate member opening. Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust has one opening. The Hamilton Human Rights Commission has one opening that needs to be a Housing Authority rep. And the Hamilton Zoning Board of Appeals has one associate opening. It's a time of our meeting for public comment for three minutes on topics not already on the meeting agenda. I'll look around for any, Joe, does anybody raising their hand?
I was just informed, excuse me, I was just informed that on the TV at home, there's a big thing in the middle of the screen. And what does it say? Can you show that to me again? Is there some way we can clean that up?
I've noticed that in other meetings too, Darcy, so I'm not sure what causes that, right?
This is what people see on their home screen.
I have no idea. That's the first time anybody pointed it out to me, but I don't.
Okay, any other comments? All right, in terms of selectmen and town manager reports, I'm not quite by the spot since we're coming off of a week and a half holiday where not much happened. I'm gonna announce here's that Luke McMahon, who's a student at Hamilton Wenham, is joining us as sort of an intern, if you will. We're gonna be starting liaison positions, but he's gonna be working with me as an intern to develop what that position means for students to help boards and committees and help develop a program for other boards and committees. So Luke has joined us tonight and he'll just be observing and him and I are gonna meet later this week to kind of make a plan. And if he has questions, you're gonna email them to me and I will bring them up to the board as we go through the meeting tonight. So everybody can welcome Luke to the meeting. Anybody else? I'll just, I'll just ask anybody else if any, any updates. Darcy, go ahead.
I do. I did go to the December 24th Council on Aging luncheon that was at the community house and it was very well attended. They had live music. The police department elves served up the meal and everything was packed up for at-home consumption because of the COVID. But they had fun. The music was wonderful. They had trivia. They gave away some door prizes. And I think a good time was had by all. So I just wanted to, you know, thank everybody for that. And I did meet Teresa Woodbury, our new COA Director. It was her first day, so it was a, it was a good one. Let's see, I also heard while I was there, one of the landowners in the Woodland Mead area, her name is Ginny. She said that there are trails in that area that the public uses quite a bit and that it's a combination of, I think, what do they call it? Public ways, rights of way, and perhaps a combination of paths and trails. And she wasn't exactly sure. But she said they were in very, very poor condition and she's concerned about safety. So she wanted me to find out if there was any way we could maybe ask the DPW if there was something they could do or offer for advice or whatever. So I just wanted to, to let you know that somebody had approached me about that. And I guess it's quite a trail and it's used by a lot of different people. Let's see, and I think, yeah, I think that's about it. Unless you have an update on the backflow valve, Joe? Or anything on the ADA audit that's being proposed by the state?
Yeah, we'll get to, yeah, Joe has an update for us on a couple of things.
Okay, so I'll wait off, I'll wait.
Anybody else, Rosemary or Sean or Jamie, anything else?
Um, just, I, I think I would say that I too met Teresa Woodbury. I've been helping out with their COVID vaccine clinics every week. And boy, it's getting busier and busier. And that I've met Teresa Woodbury and she is such a lovely person. And I have to tell you that COA is rocking with people and it is just fabulous. I've not seen a skull on anybody's face. Everybody's really happy and that makes my heart happy for, for our seniors as well. So our next project, one of my next projects is going to be to start to think about doing some things for the younger seniors, the people who are empty nesters but aren't quite ready to sit down. So anybody has any ideas out there, I would love to hear them. I'm always very much thinking about the front lines. What can we do to make the town better for, for people who live here? So that's, other than that, really, it's been a very quiet couple of weeks.
Anybody else?
I don't really have much other than kind of a forecast or preview, nothing in the past, just next week on Thursday. As all of us know here, we've got our joint meeting with the school committee and the FinComs. But also on that Thursday is our CPC meeting for the eligibility. For any grantees that are wishing to apply for ATM. So if you're out there, I think January 7th is the last day to get your eligibility application in for the CPC for that Thursday meeting on the 13th.
Since you're left, Jamie, might as well ask if you got anything? So Joe, Joe is working on the new template. I don't know if you'll all get a chance to see it for his, his weekly draft, which is due, was due today. So I looked at it, Joe, I like the format a lot. I think it's great. I like how you go department by department, kind of a running to-do list, if you will. Sort of on Google Docs. So I think it's a good start.
Can, can everybody see that? So I'm gonna see if I can page. It's a little different. Funny how, funny how we lost how to do all these things then when we went away from doing meetings in person. Went back to doing meetings in person, let me see.
Mike, yeah, I think you just make it like a 125 or something.
There we go. Yeah, I'm gonna try and. So this is a Google Doc. And what we've done to set up places, it's not completely filled in, but we set up places for the different department heads to provide some updates on just different things. And here, Darcy, you'll notice that the backflow valve, the design plans are drafted. They need to schedule meeting with Asbury Grove, discuss finance system. Tim is gonna be working on it when he returns this week. And I can tell you that as far as it's not in here yet, but as far as the the SETP Plan, I signed the contract with McCormick School at UMass Boston last week before I left on vacation. So we'll be starting with a kickoff meeting sometime here this month in January. So we'll be in really good shape by this. We'll have most of the information that we need by the late, late part of the spring. It may take into the fall to complete the final report, but we'll be in really good shape as far as knowing what the information is here.
Just to clarify, we're talking about ADA compliance.
Yeah.
So it's important that people at home understand what we're talking about. We're using all these acronyms and things. And it just goes right over people's heads.
Absolutely. Let me, let me clarify that for you, for the folks at home, I mean. SETP Plan is the self-evaluation and transition plan that is required by the Mass Office of Disabilities in order to, you know, really evaluate your buildings. And then see if, if you want to be able to apply for state funding to help with your accessibility challenges, then you need to have a SETP in place. So that's what we're, we're embarking on now. So thank you for letting me know. Thanks.
And Joe, the financials was empty, is that to say, because they haven't updated yet, or do they have no updates? Something I saw that was, that was empty section was.
Yeah, I think they just don't have any update. Yeah, I think they just don't have any updates yet, but Alex will get to it hopefully here before we, you know, well, not hopefully, he'll get to it before we make this a live document. The idea is gonna be to bring this to you every two weeks and then in the weeks in between, we'll finalize them and put them on the website, send them out through the e-newsletter, the bi-weekly newsletter on Fridays. So people that sign up for the newsletter will get them at home and people who just wanna look at them online, they'll be able to go on, go to the town website and find them.
And, and then the other thing too, Joe, is that so it's gonna be a live document for the select board, but not for the public, right?
Right, we'll lock, we'll lock it before we put it on online.
Good, all right. This is a great, this is a great format. I, I have a couple of comments I'll send you direct, but anybody else should do the same, but I think it's a great format. Easy to read, easy to understand. And I think it should be running. I think everything we talk about should be on it, almost like a to-do list. And we can just update it and track it. So I think this is great.
If any of the other board members wanna see this, this way, I can, I can share this document with you so that you can, you can make comments on it. Or if you don't think that you'll be able to open it as a Google Doc, I can make a PDF and send it to you. You can just send your mail. So I'll do it both ways. I'll share it and I'll, I'll send it as a PDF as well.
And then exciting news, the website, I was on the website today too. The website looks refreshed. I didn't get a chance to go through it all, Joe, but that is now up and, up and running. Is it completely updated or is it in pieces and phases?
Well, it's, it's completely, the refresh is done. There may be a couple of individual department pages that need to update some information, but the, the refresh is, went live today. And, you know, we heard, I wasn't in the office, so I haven't heard myself anything, but I know that I did hear from Laurie that she was pretty happy with the way it looked and it doesn't. You know, hopefully we'll get a little more traffic with it and we've invited people to continue to make comments to let us know how it works. Corinne actually had something to do with that. So if she wants to comment, you might, she might have something to add.
No, I think we're all trying to, you know, get into the new, the new setup and all things we couldn't find. So I know Laurie was being very good about getting back in touch with Sterling to fix things. So it's, it's still, it's still being worked on. But yeah, most of the changes that we had all were there and it should be much easier to navigate.
Right, and Joe, can you, Joe, if you just, I think we, you can just scroll through the manager report and then we'll turn, take it off the screen just so we can see each other. And if you wanna scroll through anything else on there?
Bill, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead, Darcy.
Joe, I forgot, I forgot to ask you on the IT update for the collaboration that we're forming with the other towns. Has anything happened with that?
We've been, we've been talking to them about working on some cybersecurity purchases for the towns that the, all the towns are having to adopt. So we're, we're working on that right now with Danvers. Nothing finalized yet, but hopefully I can update you at the next meeting. We'll have some good news on that, so.
And will that be included on this document? Okay, thank you.
Joe, if you can just scroll through the other, other pages real quick and then we can jump off this.
Oh, yeah, thanks, buddy.
Don't wanna go too fast.
That's good. I just want people to see the format, but yeah, I think it needs a little bit of work, but I think it's a good format, easy to understand, so. All right, anything else before we move on to the consent agenda? Okay, so we have two items, like it said to Jenna, one is approve minutes of the joint meeting between the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen on December 8th, 2021. And then reappoint town constables, which is a recommendation by Corinne Cal. So a better chance to redo that?
Okay, so moved. I'm so moved, yes.
Second.
Second, from Ozzy, okay, all those in favor, say aye. Roll call vote. Sorry about that, since we're on a Zoom call here, so we'll talk with Darcy Dale.
Darcy Dale, aye.
Rosemary Kennedy.
Rosie Kennedy, aye.
Jamie Newton.
Derek Newton, aye.
John Farrell.
John Farrell, aye.
And William Olson, a unanimous consent. We'll move to Karen, sorry, Corinne Cal has a town clerk update as our first agenda item. So I know Corinne sent a lot of dates, a lot of information and election paperwork, all that good stuff we have to get done. So I'll give you the floor here for a few minutes. You can just tell us what's important.
Hi, everyone. Thanks and Happy New Year to everyone. Yeah, there are several things going on, so I thought this would be a good chance, other than just by email to indeed talk about it, answer any questions you have. And for members of the public who are listening or watching at another point in time, it'll give them a little bit more information about some of the key things going on. I have loaded some of the information onto the Town Clerk's webpage. I haven't quite yet put it onto the town's landing page, but everything will wind up on the website as well. So yeah, the April 7th election is not as far away as it sounds. I think I mentioned the update, your last meeting nomination papers are available on January 10th. So that's not, not too far away. That's one week away. So I did send out to all elected officials on December 22nd. Any official's term is expiring, so I just thought it'd be good to quickly go over that list again for you to know everybody as well as the general public who's watching. So on the Board of Selectmen, both Rosie and Darcy's terms are up. Board of Assessors, Chris Campbell. Planning Board has three who are up, Amel Dollquest, Bill Wheaton and Corey Blue. Housing Authority has one, Michelle Horgan's seat. Town Moderator is a one-year term, so Phil Bowler is up for reelection or the seats available. Hamilton Wenham Library Trustees, Nicole Gray. And on the school committee, there's three seats open. One of them is a current Hamilton resident, Michelle Horgan, and then Michelle Bailey from Wenham and David Toledo from Wenham. So all those are available and folks do have to, have to inform the clerk of their intention to run. So that was in the memo that got sent out to the current elected officials and anybody else who steps into my office to ask about it, they'll fill out the same kind of document. One change that's gonna happen with this year's process or proposed change that's gonna, that's likely to happen is regarding the school committee candidates. In the past, I guess way in the past, the school committee used to hold their own election. And that's what the way that the agreement is written. And somewhere along the line, they realized that, you know, it made more, I guess, made more sense for the clerks to run the election. But the issuance of the nomination papers and the subsequent certification of the voters who signed it still stayed with the school committee. So last year I started asking some questions about that and I did require the school department to provide me with the list of all of the nomination papers. Because I was explaining to them that when a ballot comes out, I mean, it's, it's the clerk's ballot. It's my signature that's in the upper corner and it's me saying that it complies with all the laws and, you know, deadlines were all met. And I did not feel comfortable delegating certification of those signatures to someone else. And I also can find nothing in state law that even permits such delegation. So Janelle over there was fabulous to work for with, and we worked through it last year. But this year with Trudy Reed over in Wenham and myself and speaking to Dana and Laura are realizing that we really need to formalize that. And that nomination paper should be available in the clerk's office, just like any other elected official. And likewise, the clerks will certify the nomination papers. So that's on the agenda for the school committee's meeting this Thursday. And so both Trudy and I will zoom into that to answer any questions there. It's just very complicated, the way the agreement was written so, so long ago makes no sense. It's got no basis in law. So we're at least gonna do what we can in the interim to clean some of that up. But so again, it is a change. So, you know, any prospective person wanting to run for school committee will indeed come to the clerk's office, not to the school department. So then all that being said, March 8th, I will have to place the order for the ballots. So that's why all these deadlines get pretty darn tight backing up on that. So if anyone has any questions, anyone in the general public, please call me or stop by the clerk's office. I'll be happy to walk folks through any of this leading up to the election. You all would have gotten.
Two quick, two quick things, just so people make easier on them. So the hours that you're there, just remind everybody what hours you're there?
Thanks, yep. Town Hall hours, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday from 8:00 to 4:30, Tuesday 8:00 to 6:30, and Friday 8:00 to 12:30.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Good question. Office Campaign Political Finance filings for any elected official in town, whether you were on the ballot in 2021 or a ballot previous to that. You are required to file a year-end filing report on January 20th. So that email did go out and I gotta give a shout out to about three or four people who have already turned in their reports. Not to put pressure on the rest of you, but the reports, the reports are definitely coming in and it's just great to get one thing out of your way and certainly to get one thing out of my way. So I appreciate your cooperation on that. Again, most of us, including myself, file the short form, so it's, it's really pretty straightforward. Conflict of interest acknowledgement and completion of online training. Folks are pretty familiar with this. Whether you're an elected official on a board or a committee, with you're a volunteer, you're a contract employee, if you provide any kind of service to the town, you are an employee of the town. You are a municipal employee for purposes conflict of interest law. And by law, you have to be provided with the summary of the law once a year. So that's what I'm working on now to get that out. And then there is an acknowledgement form where a signature has to be attached to that and sent back to my office for filing. So I've been working with Treasurer's Office on payroll to see exactly who are all the active employees right now. And cleaning up the list of all board and committee members and checking to see who, who really did file it in 20 or 21. So I'll also have a list of who's due for this year. So again, anybody who's listening, just know that this is coming hopefully by the end of the week. And again, turn it around as quickly as you can so we can both get it off of our to-do lists. Any questions on that? Be good on that. The street list census form, as we know, the town has to send out a census every year. Not, has nothing to do with the US Census. This is the local census of who lives in our town. So Assessor's Office can tell you who owns the property, but it is the results of the census that tells us who lives in town. So anytime we need to generate that about the number of people, like I just produced a report for Teresa, the Council on Aging, you know, all the residents who are gonna be turning 60 this year, 2022. So anyone 60 or older. So that's the source of that data. And for some reason, there are a lot of people who just don't like to submit those census forms. I wish I could crack that code. We're gonna continue to work on it and get the word out. But anybody who's listening, that data is very, very important when it comes to police and fire. If they have to respond to a call, that is the, I produce a document for them, a street list. And that is what they use to know what they're confronting at a particular home, whether it's a fire, whether it's a domestic violence call. They need to know who's residing in these properties. So I really just hope people will submit that material back to our, to my office. And as has been done in the past, when that gets mailed out, and it should have been mailed out last week, it might be going out this week. We don't do it from my office. We do it from a vendor. With that does go the dog license renewal forms. Again, the sooner people can get those in and off your to-do list, the better. And the trash schedule and the notice of the upcoming precinct change that we'll be going through, all are going out in that mail. So forward to getting all those back so we can get the updated data in, in my office. What else? The one thing I haven't mentioned in a while, the warrant articles that were approved at the special town meeting changed to the Board of Selectmen, named a select board. We're expecting the review and approval from the Attorney General's Office on or before February 2nd. So as a reminder, until then, it is absolutely still the Board of Selectmen. And the effective date will become the date that the constable posts the information about that approval. So depending on when it comes into my office and I will ahead of time have documents ready for the constable. And then I will formally let all you know. I know everybody's anxious to, to be able to move forward with that. So just wanted to, again, remind everybody who's listening that it's not official yet. So we'll keep you posted on that. So that's, that's really kind of the big things going on. Again, use this as an opportunity to keep you all to date and see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Corinne.
Great, thank you all.
All right, next item on the agenda is a one-day liquor license at the Patton. At the Patton, it's open house. It's a, we think we're represented here by Paul and Beth Denhauser from Essex County Brewery. So Joe, I saw the application, looks like it's, it's, you know, for, it's a for-profit, so it's a beer and wine only permit. It's less than five hours, it's 11:30 to 4:00. It's within our hours of operation. They have an insurance certificate. Looks like everything's in order. Any questions or am I missing anything?
You haven't missed anything. In addition to Paul and Beth being here, Holly Erickson, the Patton Homes, the directors here, she's helped put together the, the event that Essex County Brewing is participating in. So if you have any questions, they're both here available to answer.
I have no questions. I looked at it, it looks good to me. And actually, I'm glad to be having an event. So thanks for organizing the event and thanks for being part of it. Rosemary and Darcy, do you guys have any questions or Sean or, or Jamie?
Yeah, no, I think everything looks good to me. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for showing up.
I have a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for January 22, 22.
I beat you, Darcy.
Wanna arm wrestle?
Any further discussion? I mean, I see Paul, you're there. Do you have anything you'd like to say or use your time to get a little, get a little marketing in for the event?
No, no, looking forward to it. It's a, you know, we're a small craft brewery. We LLC'd in Bauxford, but we brew over in PBD. We did about 20 events at Appleton Farm last year, very successfully, great catalyst for community gathering. So looking forward to coming to Hamilton and partnering with Holly. So hopefully we get a good, good turnout.
Yeah, and get some snow for some sledding or something, right?
Exactly, exactly, yep.
You know what, I did, I did think of one question. Paul, welcome. We're, we're happy to have you come. My question is, it's pretty wide open space and one of the concerns that we had when we had our Fall Festival was a lot of beer was walking down the street. And my question to you is, how do you intend to prevent that from happening at the Patton estate?
Yeah, so we work with Holly, obviously, we're one element of the overall planning and just work within whatever element she has. I mean, typically we would have an area that is actually roped off for alcohol consumption, but I'm not sure, Holly, if you wanted to speak with.
Actually, actually, Paul, since you're applying for the license, you're the person who's responsible for that. So that's why I'm directing this question to you.
Yep, no problem. Yeah, so in all of our events, historically, we've had an area that has actually been roped off. So I mean, I recommend that that would be the approach that we would take here and that way we can control the alcohol consumption within the area that is the premise, so to speak. So that, that would be the approach that we would recommend.
That's part of the, yes, I'll let Holly comment, she said, but Holly, that you're, you're prepared to support that roped off area.
Yeah, that's, that's the general idea. I am looking forward to, now that the holidays are over, having a closer connect with the police department. Just to make sure that we can actually establish a secure boundary. And also I have signage on my list of things to do. We will, we will be working in several directions that making sure that alcohol is not leaving the premises.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other further discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Rosemary.
Rosie Kennedy, aye.
Darcy Dale.
Darcy Dale, aye.
Sean Farrell.
Sean Farrell, aye.
Jamie Newton. And William Olson, aye. So I look forward to having some symposium over there in a couple of weeks.
Judah, Judah is actually the brand in Hamilton, one of generals, so.
We're really excited and I hope they all mark your calendars for the 22nd. I would love to meet you all in person. And it really looks like it's shaping up to be an amazing event.
Event actually, does the event actually start at 11:30 as well, too?
It will be starting at 11:30 and we're just doing that because that is when the Wenham, the Wenham Museum tour ends. So we hope to sort of, you know, transition into the next event from there. you know, transition into the next event from there.
Great. All right. Well, thank you for joining tonight and uh, we'll see you on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
To y'all, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the request to support extended producer responsibility legislation, discuss and vote. So we had this on the agenda a few meetings ago. Um, and I asked the table to give us, give us some more thought and to get some more research. And since that time, other communities have taken this up and, and, and supported this. So I think I actually feel good about where we're at with it now. And um, so I, you know, so I, I guess I'm ready to support it myself. And I just wanted further discussions sort of from Anne in terms of the letter, in terms of, I, I read a couple of different letters that were attached to our packet. And I'm just wondering, is there a letter drafted that we need to sign or do we need to write our own letter?
Um, I, I drafted a letter that I had submitted to you. I totally drafted it myself. I'm not tied to it. I just submitted it uh as a suggestion um, to help you out. But again, I'm not tied to it at all.
Um, yeah, man, I like that. I mean, I read the letters for, so, and I potted and compare them side by side, but I read the letters from both Cambridge and Boston and and municipals, committee and stuff like municipal authority. Are they, are they sort of in the same context of those?
No, I, I did a much shorter letter um, without all the facts and figures and uh, it, it was simply a letter to the, you know, our local legislator saying, we really like this. We'd like you to support it. Thank you very much. Basically, it was one paragraph, so.
Joe, so Joe, that wasn't part of, that wasn't part of the earlier packet. I can go back and look at it because it wasn't or maybe it was what you added, was it what you added later?
No, I added an updated ATM calendar. Um.
Yeah, I don't think I saw it. I saw the Cambridge and the other one, but I don't think I'm kind of scrolling through. Maybe I missed it.
If it's one paragraph, I'd like to.
It was in the packet.
It was? Okay, what page is it?
No, it was in the packet when Anne presented.
Oh, yes, right.
Oh, the first, the first time.
The original, the first time I had both a draft letter and a draft board vote.
So Joe, maybe if you could share your screen, if you can find it, but while you're finding.
I'm gonna look for it right now. I, I think.
Yeah, while you're finding, let's make, let's just make the motion and then we'll have discussion about the motion, just the motion's made. But uh, so could I have a motion to and I'm gonna go back and read this. Sorry. Can I have a motion to approve, to approve a request to support the extended producer responsibility legislation?
So moved.
Second, 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 okay, so further discussion. So um, I'm much more comfortable supporting it. I was just afraid that we were creating sort of a tax on a tax and we're gonna end up being consumers who pay for it. If, if, if the producers get lazy, they're just gonna charge money to pay the tax to have more cardboard. But I think that with more communities being part of it, it's gonna be more pressure to actually go to the producers and make them change their ways. So I think building this uh, like it's grassroots efforts, like we always do, and then, and getting the support of other towns and communities, and I think is the right thing to do. So um, Joe, I don't know if you found it yet. But, but I'll let uh, Darcy or Rosemary or Sean or Jamie sort of tell me where they're at with supporting this uh.
I, I, oh, I support this. I think it's about time. I think people have to think downstream, when they, when they package a product, they're gonna have to think about everything. Every part of that project or package has to be accounted for and disposed of properly. So I'm, I'm for it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with, with Darcy and obviously Anne, who's brought it to us with, with Gradle. It's I like the fact that when I read through the kind of more information that we got from last time about mattresses and et cetera, et cetera. You know, just all those things that, you know, we can we can kind of help the environment with or with the lack of, I guess. You know, every time I get packaging, I can really tell who's, who's thoughtful about their packaging and who's not. And it makes me angry sometimes on how much packaging some things come in. So this will kind of curb some of that and make people really think about it.
Joe, so it looks like Joe, you found the uh
Yep.
letter. Is it Anne?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you. Okay.
Can everybody read that?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Dunn, and are doing support municipalities in your district. We're asking you to support the adoption of of an act to save recycling costs in Commonwealth Bill, which would create an extended producing responsibility program for paper and packaging products in Massachusetts. Um, so you basically reported that. And then they say at the bottom, it's before the joint committee, we asked you to join as a co-sponsor of this bill and support its enactment of law. We also like to point out that other bills are pending for legislation that would require manufacturing responsibility for recycling of paint, mattresses and electronics. These bills would help to reduce the cost and burden on the community, on the municipality of hard recycle items. According to, we asked you to support them as well. Um, uh, Jamie, thank um, Jamie and Rosie, your thoughts, and then we can take a vote.
Yeah, no, I, I support it. I mean, I, I do worry about those costs a, a little bit to, to individual taxpayers. But on the other hand, it's just so burdensome to our landfills to have all this unnecessary packaging. Burden it. So I'm absolutely for it.
Yeah, it's just, this, this time of year, too, we have lots of packages to throw out. So it would be nice.
Yep, and, and, and I will say this as sort of a, just as a off-the-cuff remark that, you know, I think sometimes the feeling is the more packaging, the more you can sort of justify the cost because it's very sort of um over the top and, and, and the uh, psychology is, oh, this is very precious. So you can justify the price for it by we making all this packaging, when in reality, it is so superfluous and so, so wasteful that it's just absurd.
Um, any discussion from, uh, so Joe, you can take that down and then we can see anybody in the uh on the Zoom, any of the public, has any comments or questions on this support?
Will we be signing this individually, this, this letter?
I think we should. Yeah, I think we should have five signatures on it, but.
Well, I, I also submitted a draft board vote. Um, so I don't know whether Joe has that as well. I submitted it at the same time as the letter. Um, I, I was anticipating that you would take the vote and then Joe could sign it on behalf of the town and, and send it in. Uh, e- either that or all the board members could sign the letter as well.
I think it'd be me more coming from the elected officials myself.
And, and just as, as an FYI, well, Joe is perhaps looking for the board, the draft board vote. Um, I don't know whether you're aware of it, but um Mass DEP has announced that they're gonna be banning mattresses in the waste stream. Um, starting, I believe, this November. So they gave and I, I, I don't know how they're gonna enforce it. I, I think they're gonna start off with the, the large producers, the universities, the hotels, et cetera. Um, I, I don't know how they're gonna prevent. The, the, the problem is, is Casella picks them up now and takes them to landfills or incinerators. Um they're a problem and DEP wants to stop it, but there, there today is no collection point, no, th- there, there's no system for what to do with mattresses right now.
Right.
I, I don't know what's gonna happen.
So, so Anne, did you say they're going to enforce this or it is going to pass?
Well, they've already, they've already announced the ban. The ban is effective as of this coming November. What I'm saying is, I don't know how they're gonna enforce it because nothing is set up yet to
Right.
to collect and recycle all of these mattresses that they want to get out of the waste stream, so.
Yeah, sometimes I think it's putting the cart before the horse. I think that's a little.
I can envision that, um, I can envision that sometime between now and November, you'll see a lot of people dump their mattresses so that they can get a new mattress, so that they don't have to worry about it come November.
Yeah, that's just, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I I, I'm hoping that um, whoever was responsible for this, for this bill will take affirmative steps to make sure that there's a solution because that would not be a good thing.
Well, there, there is currently a bill to do EPR for mattresses. Um, and I think DEP is hoping that that will pass because then people would pay an extra ten dollar fee, I think, when they buy a mattress. That fee goes to support a program where there'd actually be collection points and take backs and recycling of those mattresses, but unless that bill passes, it's gonna be pretty hard to have a ban on mattresses i- in the, in the waste stream.
Joe, can you scroll down just so I can see the bottom of that?
Yep, is, I was just gonna say the resolutions here is, as Anne drafted it, so.
This is a, a form of resolution that was passed by Newton and uh, then it was modified and shortened somewhat by uh, a group of communities on the South Shore. So I, I did not draft this on my own.
I'm wondering what their, what the meaning is. EPR creates jobs and economic development. Take back opportunities for their customers. I mean, that, that sounds lovely, but I wonder in reality, what that, what that means.
I, I think it just means creating recycling jobs. Um, again, if there's mattress take back, if there's paint take back programs. I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not wedded to it. We could take that paragraph out. I, I'm, I'm not tied to it at all.
Sorry, Darcy, please.
Oh, I was just gonna say, can, do you think we could take um, uh, a a little time and see if we do wanna do any editing or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what uh, time. I know that last time we talked about it, you know, Anne said it wasn't exactly, it wasn't a rush, but it needs, you know, it's not gonna be voted on in the next week or so. So if you want, someone to take a, you know, stab at, but I would like to move it off the agenda. So I think, yeah, if someone to take a stab at the language over the next two weeks, we can vote on it in two weeks. I, I, I have no, we don't have to rush it through today if someone wants to make some edits to it. But I think, I think the framework, I think the framework is fine. I think you're right. I think we just wanna make sure that we're putting our names on something that we're comfortable with, so.
Right.
And, and I guess I'd just like to point out that it, it's in committee right now. Um, and it needs to be reported out of committee by February fourth or else it dies. So.
The more, the more kind of support they get, the faster it's gonna move along, theory, right?
Right. Or else, if it doesn't get enough support, then it could die as of February fourth, if it's not reported out positively, so.
So the first section of this was just the letter. I mean, if we all signed the letter, do we need to sign the letter and this, or can we just sign the letter that you wrote?
No, you could sign the letter. I, I think that would be fine. I think the, the rationale for having a a um, a board vote is if bill numbers change, if it gets reported out of committee and bill numbers change, or it gets merged with something else, or uh, it fails this year, but then gets refiled uh, with a different name. I, I think the, the draft board vote was intended to be generic enough to um, say that Hamilton supported this generally, rather than the particular bill that's in committee right now, which is the, really what the letter does. So they do serve a little bit of a different purpose. I think for right now, what's important is certainly to get the letter out.
Perfect. Yeah. So I make a motion?
I think I made the motion. Yeah, make them, but I'm gonna make a different motion to sign the letter.
Okay, so this would be, I'm making a motion just for the first document that we looked at, that was in support of the concept.
Correct. And then we, and then we can take up the, the, the board vote.
After we have more information. Okay, so I'm gonna move that we um, we uh, vote to sign that first document that will send our support to the State House for this um, uh, ER book. What is it? I can't find it. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Second.
A second by Sean. I would do a roll call vote. Any further discussion?
All right, I'd be in, uh, oh, I'm sorry, after, after the vote. This is about the other part.
Okay, all right. So um, Darcy Dale.
Darcy Dale, aye.
Rosemary Kennedy.
Rosie Kennedy, aye.
Sean Farrell.
Sean Farrell, aye.
Jamie.
Eric Newton, aye.
And uh, William Olson, aye. Okay, so go ahead, Rosie on. So, so Joe, you're gonna take that letter, draft it up, put five signature lines on it, and we'll come by and sign it over the next week.
Exactly. Yep, just perfect. I'll put it on, on letterhead, uh, signature blocks with the five of you and uh, have Lori let you know as soon as it's ready.
Okay. Uh, Rosie, on the next part, yes, go ahead.
Sure, I was just going to say, Anne, if you um, had some time in the next two weeks and the board wanted me to maybe sit, sit down with you a little bit to um, delve into the particulars of this letter um, and talk about it some more. I, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, that, that'd be great, Rosie, if people have questions.
I support that effort. Thank you.
I actually would like to be involved in that, too. I'd like to um, take a look at that letter, if that's okay.
Two is fine, as long, as long as Jamie and Sean aren't jumping into this group, then we're good.
No, I think that's fine. It is, as long as maybe we give ourselves a
Yep.
timeframe to get info to Rosie, Darcy and or Anne about any edits or changes. Can we maybe say a couple of days or so? Is that too quick for people to look it over and maybe by, by Friday this week, have any questions to edit to them, so they can get on it for our next meeting? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that, for, for me, that sounds fine. I wouldn't be able to get to it. Um, until, until probably the end of the week, um, at any rate, so.
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda is
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Next agenda is the uh, Hamilton HRC Statement About ADA Accessibility Review and Discuss. Um, so Joe, who is here to present that?
I believe you have Anne Brady, as well as Nancy Stefis and Jared Hughes, all from the HRC Committee. And uh, Jamie Newton is your member on the committee, so.
I will thank you for working on this. So um, and I think we're all in support of ADA accessibility in town and what we need to do. So why don't you talk about what this is and um, what our next steps are?
Um, this statement is honestly in response to um, the fact that we were not active at the time. The um, HRC, I should say, was not active at the time of the um, original activity around the ADA accessibility. Um, and the renovation movement for Town Hall. And um, we felt that it was important for our us to have a statement out there about our support for um, the move toward Town Hall being made ADA accessible as well as any other facility in town that might not be ADA accessible. So this statement is a very general statement in that direction that can be used in support of any efforts toward increasing ADA accessibility around town. Should have been provided in your packet.
Yeah, I have it in the packet. So Joe, in the packet is also the original the original commission purpose statement. Is that what, what's the reason? Out of order, okay. Gotcha. So I was confused by, okay, so um so I mean, I think that statement's good. And I think we've, we've also obviously gonna reconstitute the Town Hall Committee because we, we know we need to do something and it's gonna take some planning. So there's, there's no, there's no, it's not never too early to start planning and discussing it. So I think it's an important part of that process to make sure that we are doing the right thing around town and have full support, everyone in town and, and make sure that everybody's, is being represented as we improve our town infrastructure.
We just wanted to make it known that our support is very strongly behind that effort.
I know Darcy and Rosie is as well. Um, do we, what are, like, what other discussion, Joe, should we have on this before? Um, do we need to to the letter, it just becomes part of the record?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best idea. It's a, the HRC's already voted in support of the uh, statement. So um, it gives you the, the board another tool as you look to build support for Town Hall or any other accessibility project.
I think you've taken this up. Jamie, anything else you wanna add as a, as a member of both boards and committees?
No, no, um, I don't, there wasn't, I don't think there was anything critical or whatever about bringing it to the board just to, you know, it was done. And hopefully you don't hate it.
Uh, Rosie, Darcy, yeah, sorry, go ahead, John.
That's sorry, Bill. Um, and Joe, will this be kind of baked into when we do have assessment and stuff like that? Is this maybe part of what the review or?
I don't, I don't, I don't think there's the, the self-evaluation and assessment transitionally needs this. Uh, it's a kind of its own process, but
Separate, yeah.
But certainly this will be.
But certainly this will be something else that'll be in support for when the town is, you know, decides to take it up against. When you, when you was the board.
It'd help one of our kind of talking points as well, so.
Rosemary, anything else to add before we move on to the next part of the HRC? Agenda?
No, thank you.
No, thank you for taking this up. So the next part of the agenda is recommendations for an amendment to the policy and definition. So that was also part of our packet. So Anne, why don't you walk us through what your changes or recommendations are?
I may turn, if there needs to be more discussion of this, I may turn it over to Jared as he really took the lead on this, but this grows out of a presentation that we made to you back in May, when we explored how necessary it was to change the protected classes that were listed in the policy that formed the HRC. And at the time, you took a vote that we did not need to change the listing of protected classes, but you asked us to create this definition section to show what made up all of the protected classes and clearly define each of the protected classes and any other terms that might not be easily understood so that people could see the range of everything that we were trying to work toward. So that's what this represents. You should have the policy there in front of you showing footnotes or end notes that would show you how the definition section would be referenced, as well as an attachment with the complete definition section that gives you the entire set of definitions that has been researched and developed by the.
Right, so I see the three, three footnotes, and then what I didn't see until recently, because Joe just said it was the appendix A, so I saw that, but I saw it later because it wasn't with the original packet, but I have seen it now, so.
Okay.
I had not had a chance to go through the appendix ages because it came a little bit later, and I didn't actually look for it in a separate email, but um, but no, this is what we asked to do, and so but we can just go through real quick, and Joe, maybe you show, John, if you have both in front of you, we can share first the 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 notes from the packet, the three notes at the bottom. So it says that, you know, regardless of race, color, ancestry, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, religion, disability, marital familiar status, military veteran test, socioeconomic status, and or ex offender status, and there's three notes. The first note is sex refers to sex assigned at birth is a classification of male, female, or intersex based off of anatomy, chromosomes, and hormones. Number two was religion. Religion, religious creed means the actual or supposed faith, belief, or moral philosophy of an individual or the lack thereof. And then please see appendix A for an extensive listing of items related to personal identity.
I think it might be a page up, Joe.
Yeah, it's right at the bottom there, or it should be. It won't be, I go to, keeps going up.
This page twenty-three.
Go up, go up a little bit more to twenty-three. Very small print on the bottom here.
And then the origin of these notes, with these notes, um, did you have to create them yourself? Did you find them in other sort of in other documents of the same sort of other communities, or just so we have some background on on your hard work?
Could you repeat that question, please?
So your definitions that you came up with, you guys create these, did you guys, oh, sorry, Joe, I think you guys have feedback. Sorry. Looking for the origin of the definitions, I think that makes sense. We just want to make sure, so that these have been tried and tested definitions, or did you have to sort of combine research that you did from many different sources?
Um, I'm gonna actually, if Jared does not mind answering that question, since he and a couple of others did the bulk of the research on the definitions, it was a great deal of research. I would prefer that he answer that question.
Yeah, so our group did look at definition sections from other municipalities, from universities and colleges throughout the country, and then from our own government resources to look at the most up-to-date language around all of these definitions that we had already decided to include. So these are not our own creation, so much as trying to make sure we were matching current definitions across our communities within Massachusetts, as well as broader across the country.
Now, like you included the references as well, too, in the, I know I'm in favor of clear and succinct, and I think these are clear and succinct, they're succinct is important. I think it's something like this, which is why we were trying to keep the the actual purpose succinct and clear and add to it, but um, so I guess it's, I'm just interested, do you have anything else to say before we let the board discuss? Do you have any other comments?
So on the note of clear and succinct, we did want to only specifically address the two terms that were up for debate previously about whether they needed to be expanded upon with sex and religion on the document, but we wanted to ensure that we did the full definition section as an appendix and useful resource for anyone who wanted to look into those further.
So so where is the, where is the definition of just sex? You certainly have a very in-depth explanation of gender expression, but where is sex, because there are still a lot of issues that are particular, particular to to women, right?
So Rosie, we we put the definitions for sex and religion directly on the policy document. And then the further definitions is the appendix, which has definitions for every other segment that was in our policy.
Jared, are you talking about the three kind of footnotes on the bottom of the policy?
So if it would be helpful, instead of just doing further definitions, we could also put sex and religion into that appendix for the full definition sections, rather than only there.
I kind of think we should, even though it's redundant, but I think that I think it should be in there just for a little more clarity, so it's, I don't want to be overkill with it, but I think that some people may overlook those three footnotes and go into the definitions and then wonder where it is.
Yeah, that makes sense. And just as a note to the individual Barbara Smith, who's brought up atheists during our our investigations of definition sections from both municipalities and the government, atheists are not defined as a separate group. It is what we decided to go to with this, let me pull it back up specifically.
Yeah, lack, or the lack thereof, right?
Means actual or supposed faith, belief, or moral philosophy of an individual, or the lack thereof. And so that was what we saw as the common vernacular around religion and atheism, and.
And and atheism has been protected as a religious belief in many court cases.
So the precedent there was such that we decided to just keep religion and not create a new segment on our definition section.
Well, I'm pretty uncomfortable not having women mentioned, because women have special needs, and they have, they need special protections. So I, you know, I I am concerned about this. This policy needs to cover everybody, and in fact, I'm having doubts about naming everybody, when in fact, why don't we just make it short, sweet, make sure it covers everybody, so you don't exclude anybody? And I think we should reconsider naming everybody. I really think if you just have a very for example, I know some towns have kept it to two or three paragraphs, and they covered everybody. Everybody understood what they were talking about and how everybody was protected. So I'm I'm kind of concerned about that. It's a, you know, and I also have to say, in the last eighteen months, and this is important, the HRC spokesperson and some of the proponents, not all of them, but some have shown an obvious pattern of behavior on social media. This pattern of behavior includes name-calling. It includes it's meant to intimidate, humiliate, embarrass, harass, and to make people feel unsafe. They'll, they do it to anyone who is not sufficiently subservient to their personal opinions. The language used in these social media posts includes shocking name-calling and even a sexual slur. They have chosen to use anti-human rights biases and negativity against good people who are not racist. They are not bigots. They are not homophobes, and they are not TERFs. And if you don't know what T E R F means, you should look it up. I had to. Name-calling is a technique used in order to make examples of people who have different opinions on how to solve problems. We need all hands on deck, and each idea that furthers our progress is worth considering. Name-calling on social media from the HRC must cease. Name-calling and demands for subordination acts as a deterrent for our democracy. No one is going to be willing to stand up and put themselves or their family in this kind of danger, and it scares away good people who would like to serve, but they're scared of being attacked by certain individuals on the HRC. They attempt to silence other opinions about solving problems, and that creates division, and it creates hostility. We expect a higher standard of behavior from human rights advocates because they are ambassadors. They are ambassadors to the town.
Darcy, 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 one second. I don't want to cut you off, Darcy, but this needs to be a discussion, not a, not just. But you're making accusations that have not been proven.
I have received.
Instead of making accusations not proven, let's have a productive discussion about what we can do.
Okay, so this is the productive part.
Okay.
This proclamation that I think we should have should be concise and brief, include every single person without excluding anyone. And some soul searching is in order here, and the idea that we should simply ignore the bylaws, act only on emotion, that's how democracies are dismantled. So I'm going to defend regular order, which gives way to transparency, and transparency is the only way we can have accountability. That's how our democracy functions. What we do is we communicate, we collaborate, and we compromise. So I just want people to know that we need to do some rethinking. We need to think about how we want to come across to the public, and I'm going to leave it right there for now. So we need a little bit of diversity on this HRC Commission is what I'm saying. We're not diverse enough.
If if I could just say one more thing, and then I'll step back, or actually two more things, and then I'll step back. By saying HRC spokesperson, it seems that you're referring to me, and I'm not sure where it comes from, so that's all I'm gonna say about that. The second thing is, the we, we spoke of, we've made a whole presentation to you about women and atheists on May third. You're so, you, the Board of Selectmen voted on it on May third. We replied with what you asked us for. That's what you have in front of you. It's your discussion now, right? HRC out.
Yep.
Yep, mm-hmm, yep, and I'm lowering my hand, and I am silencing myself.
Okay, so, yeah, just to bring this topic back.
As you need me to answer a question before I step off the meeting.
Sorry, was it? Sorry, what was that, Anne?
Do you need me to answer any more questions for you?
Yeah, I would, I would like.
The meeting?
So Anne, I think you said immediately because people can have opinions, and that's what this is. This is Darcy's opinion. And people ought to have opinions without people jumping off the meeting, so.
There were personal accusations, however.
Well, well, I I think they were opinions, and like I said, they were unfounded opinions. I want to be clear to anybody who's listening that Darcy, these are Darcy's opinions. These aren't facts. These aren't proven facts.
These actually, I have received.
Well, they're not yet, so until until they're proven, they're your, they're your thoughts and your opinions, and and there have not been. So if you have proof of something that you think is done incorrectly, then those should go to me and Joe, so we can address them, but I have, I've seen nothing that 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 says the HRC is acting, or any of their members are acting inappropriately in this community, so.
And I think maybe the chat needs to be recorded as well, the stuff that is coming through on the chat. There's a lot going on in the chat. What was that?
Just, I just wanted to inform, the chat is recorded as part of the recording of the meeting.
Thank you.
So I think to get back to the top of the topic right now is that we were asked, we asked them to come back with definitions, because there was some uncomfortableness in the original commission purpose, and and so back to Darcy's original comment, you said that you were concerned that, and I want, I don't want you to clarify, you're concerned that women weren't addressed. But I use, do you have a recommendation for where that would be added? Because I thought they did, under sex, they did add male, female, or intersex based off anatomy. So are you saying female and women are different?
Yes, yes, I am, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. And any other?
So on on that topic, just in terms of the entire process, we did look into other definitions and look at legal cases involving issues of sex discrimination, and that's how we came to the conclusion that we'd go with this description of sex. We, we weren't looking to be exclusionary of women. We wanted to make sure that we found the best, most accurate accepted terminology for this definition section from our investigations on that, so. And Jamie looks like he might have something to add there, but.
Yeah, so if I, if I can speak, so just the, we, this was all something that happened back in early months of two thousand twenty-one, and was presented in May, so. I mean, obviously, we can talk it, we can discuss it again, but I don't think it's a particularly great thing to do. Part of the, this, the investigation research was to investigate many other statements regarding human rights, many other anti-discrimination policies, and none of them include women, because number one, it just doesn't grammatically make sense in that sentence, and two, it is covered by what is there. And the same goes with.
Probably why it would be a good idea just to keep it very, very basic, not mention everybody, because we're always going to be scrambling to keep it current. So and the more you name, the more you have to name. It just makes it very difficult to to maintain, and I think the more open it is, the the more acceptable it, and the easier to read and understand.
So so back to, so back to that record, so sorry, Joe, just to understand what you're covering. Back to, are you saying that we should not include the definition of sex? We should just leave it as sex? Is that what you're suggesting, Darcy?
Can we just simplify it? I'm sorry to interrupt. Sex, sex assigned at birth is a classification of male or female. I mean, can't we just, can't we just leave it at that? It's simple. It's.
Isn't that, isn't that what we have, though?
No, it goes on. Or or intersex based off of anatomy, chromosomes, and hormones. I, I think there are a lot of people in the world who just consider themselves male or female, and and we, and and you have other definitions that go into detail regarding the other definitions of of gender, which is fine. I would like to see just something male or female, because because we do know there's lots of literature and evidence out there that women are just just women are still discriminated in terms of promotion, in terms of financial equality in in pay, and so I don't think everything has to be micro-dissected, and I don't mean that just respectfully, because there are other categories here. Micro dissecting. And I don't mean that just respectfully because there are other categories here. I, I think there should be room for just simplicity. In, in that one statement is, is my comment about that.
Was the, the simplest way to do it is just to leave the word is not have definition for sex. Just say like it is, it just says, it says, has sex. And that is a simple coverage, anything it could possibly cover. Men, women, male, female. He, she, they covers everything. So I'm, I'm fine with. If you just want to take out number one, we'll take out number one.
Well, in that case, we should take out the gender expression as well.
You can't take out gender expression. Doesn't, no, because gender and sex are different. We, we, because we had a, gender and sex are different things. We had this discussion. So. Sexual orientation, those are different things.
I don't know. I would, I, I, I would disagree and I would like to see sex.
But we, we've already voted, we've already voted, we've already voted to have sex, sexual orientation. We're not going to go back and re-vote on that, what we're trying to do.
I don't think I voted on this. I, I don't, I, I don't think I was in agreement.
Okay, well, it's already been voted by the selectmen. So it's already an approved policy. What we're doing today is discussing whether we want to have further definitions based on recommendations the board made.
So we can't, we, we can't discuss anything other than um. The.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, so, okay, okay. So we're discussing these finite definitions. And um, and sex is one of these definitions. So I am giving my opinion that I would like it to be simplified. To sex. Male or female as designated at birth for that. And then you can certainly have the gender expressions.
How does that, how does, how does that, the inclusion of the additional words? Weakened this policy?
It, it, that, I, I'm, I'm not saying it does. I'm saying for the definition of sex. Why can't we have something as simple as sex assigned at birth? Either male or female, a classification of female or male. I, I, I don't see what the problem is that we need to um. Go on from there, right? Everybody, every human being is assigned a, a sexual designation at birth, except for in the rare case. Um, where it is not discernible.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what we're identifying here. The rare case was not discernible. It's not black or white, right?
You know, I am, I am really trying to be open minded and it would be really helpful if in simplicity. Um, we don't. We don't have to um acquiesce. This is, this is our policy. And, and so let's think about it in terms of common sense. That's what I'm asking this board to do. I am not opposing other definitions. I am asking for a simple sex to be male or female as assigned at birth. What is so hard about that? I don't understand. Maybe you can explain it to me.
Jamie, will you explain it? Why that does not work as a definition?
Well, uh. For many reasons, there are many different types of intersex individuals for one. And uh. But really like, so look, I, you know, we, it's fine to consider this the first reading. Um, and you don't have to, you know. We don't have to accept. We don't have to vote up or down today, this specific. Language if someone wants to propose different language. However, uh, le- leaving. The definition of sex as sex assigned at birth, male or female, uh, would be. Uh, would be a human rights violation in the Human Rights Commission.
Oh, my God. This, this, this really is bordering on the absurd. I'm sorry. It just doesn't make any sense to me why that is so difficult. Why is it so difficult? It's like there's some rule in the human rights world against saying people are male or female. And Jamie, I've asked for an explanation. I've asked Bill, he punted to you. You can't give me an explanation. What's wrong with that? I'm not talking about somebody's decision later in life or, 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 or when they're twelve years old. I'm saying for, to, to give some gravitas to the issues that are specific to women. It would help in our um. In, in our quest for human rights to allow somebody to be, to have just sex designated as male or female. I, I don't see the problem with that simplicity. And it's. I'm sorry. That's all I'll say.
Uh, I, if I can just. Add to the fray here. I, I, you know, I think. People at birth can be designated male or female, but oftentimes, I don't want to say often, but there are times when biologically. People are born with both sets of organs. So they are intersex or hermaphrodite. So we would be excluding that whole class of people that needs to be protected.
Come on, come on. Can we just be reasonable? I'm talking about in the sense of protecting women's rights. It, it's, it's, it's a simple.
Yeah, but you don't want to protect someone's rights by limiting some, that's what I'm saying.
We're limiting somebody else's rights. If you're, yeah. If you're excluding. People who are biologically different at birth from male and female. You're alienating and discriminating against that in our policy. It's, it's just.
You know what? I, I, I just think this is taken way beyond where it needs to be. And I insist that you give just some simple language to this. That, that most, that most people can understand and accept. This is so. It, it's, it's not meant to be disrespectful to anybody, but I think it's being disrespectful to people who just live. In a world where they want their rights protected and they want.
But that's what I'm asking.
To be able, I'm Rose, thank you.
Rosie, sorry, Rose. Yeah, but Rosie, but Rosie, take it.
No, Bill.
Take a breath for a second. But take a breath for a second because you are saying. That you're saying that people don't understand this. They're going to think it's against them. And I don't. I don't follow that. All the entire point of American was this human rights is that, is that just because people don't understand. It, it doesn't mean that it's, that it's wrong.
I'm not saying anybody doesn't understand it. I'm saying to make it simple. So that people who don't live in a, in, 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 who just live in, look. The, the Hamilton Human Rights Policy says they will protect people's rights based upon sex. I'm a female. I don't want her to be, I don't want to be discriminated against when I go to look for a job. It's as simple as that. If I go to find a job in Hamilton.
That's what it says. So why don't you, that's exactly what it says.
But, but you're also saying, you're, you're also saying or intersex based off of anatomy, chromosomes.
So someone, so someone.
Why do we need to have all of that?
We, because we, we, we can either do two, because Rosie, we can either do two things. We can leave it as sex, just leave it as sex and that's it, one word. Or we can define what sex is, but you can't define what sex is by just saying male or female. It doesn't, it's not, that doesn't include everybody.
Well, you know something for, for how many thousands of years people have, the, the, the vast majority of people do define sex. At birth as male or female.
And those.
Exception. The hermaphrodite is an exception. But even those, even, even those are given um. A, a, a sex identification. It, it's just. Oh my, it, it's just really hard for me to listen to all of this. Everything has to be so. Micromanaged, the bits of language.
It doesn't, we don't need a definition. We, 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 on the, the discussion we had that included. Everybody on the select board, Ro- Rosemary, Darcy, Jamie, Bill. Um, and Sean, we, we said that, that because of the, the deep discussion we had about the simplicity that we had. We thought maybe it might be, be a good sense, a good idea to have them make a definition. So. An appendage definition. So it didn't, so it kept the policy simple, but it allowed for further discussion. If. If you, if you have changed your mind and don't think it's a good idea, then that's fine. We don't have to do any definitions, but definitions have to be. A full definition. That's, yeah, that's the whole point of a definition. You can't have that. It only defines half the word.
Then, then actually, one of the things that I was particularly um worried about was the definition of a microaggression. And I don't see this anywhere. What is a microaggression? I, I don't see this.
Name calling.
Name.
Provide definitions for the protected class.
This is an executive discussion.
No, it's not. It's an open discussion. But um.
Um, so, so, so I, 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 I just. Um. I, and, and maybe we should consider this a, a first reading. But I, I, I feel um. I feel that we should have some discussions about um some of the um language that revolves around. I, I'm pardon me, let me look at this. Um. I think, oh gosh, where is it?
I think this is where we communicate. Collaborate. And then we um. Make our compromises. On the language.
Um, this is what I'm going to recommend because you're not going to get anywhere tonight. But I recommend is that we're going to read. Once again, we, we typically do a first meeting. The only reason that we typically would vote on the agenda is in case we all agree on it and we can move forward. But we don't typically vote on the first reading. But um, so it's fine being a first reading. What I would recommend for my thoughts, and we'll go around whenever we can give their thoughts to, I think this is good work. Um, I think this is what we asked you to do. I'm in favor, but I only change what I asked you to do is to remove the. The one, two and three from page twenty-three and put everything in the appendix and don't. Don't separate certain things. So I put all the definitions of the protected class in the appendix. And I think, and, and I, but I don't have any change in my. In my, but that, that's my thought. And like, once again, we'll review it next week and we'll go around and we just make other recommendations. But. I think what's most important, like Darcy just said, is that. We need to make, we can't just complain about it. And I don't mean the word to complain. We can't just dislike it. We have to make recommendations of what we think we should have. So. What I'm asking when we do this room is to make recommendations. So. Um, so by our dishes that we take those three off and, and put them and have that one. List of protected class definition. I'll go to uh. Rosie and, and any recommendations that you have that we can review next time.
Yep. So here, when we talk about the five members, um. We don't want to discriminate against sex, sexual orientation, gender identity. Those are three separate entities. And so um. That's my first comment um in follow-up to the comments that, that I just made. Um, the second, the second comment that I have is about disability. If I could make a comment about that, um. I think, I think you run into problems when you disability um. ADA or anything about a disability requires accommodation. And you accommodate based on the legal definition of a disability. Just because uh. Somebody uh. Somebody has a condition of the body and mind that makes it more difficult for how they um. Can do certain activities, doesn't necessarily make it a disability. That opens us up to needing to accommodate everybody who says, well. I don't like this and it upsets me. So I want you to do it a different way. Um. I think uh, being sensitive to people doesn't mean that we need to accommodate every um. Every nuance that a person might have. And I think disability, our definition of, of what is a disability. Should relate more to the legal definitions of disability.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's, it's, I'm otherwise, sorry, otherwise it's too subjective.
I mean, that's probably one that there is a more firm legal definition of. Is that, is that true? Um.
Wouldn't the ADA?
Jared, is that correct, Jared, or not? From your research?
So I can go back on disability and double check. Um, but we did try to, like I said, would these definitions match language that was currently being used? Um, both by the government and through other municipalities and universities across the country.
Well, they're not legal definitions. So I, I think if you find, if, if you've. Uh incorporate the words as defined by um federal or state statute, that would make it something. Defensible for a person who um claims a disability versus somebody. Who is perhaps um sensitive to something, but it's not a true disability. And you need to be careful about um. What risks you're incurring when you make a blanket statement like this.
Rosie, are you seeing more kind of a medically documented disability?
A legal, a, a legal documentation, um, legal documentation, be that a, a medical disability, because everybody has it. Everybody who has a disability. Doesn't have to be accommodated. It's people who have um accepted disabilities that have to be accommodated um. By whatever means possible, but I, I think. I think this is a bit of a slippery slope to, to just make it a blanket statement. Anybody who feels that. They uh. And anybody who feels that it makes it more difficult for, for them, isn't necessarily um disabled.
Right, like someone could say I'm left-handed, so it's a disability, right? I mean, I'm making a strange example, right? But. We don't want someone to say because they're left-handed, they're just, right? So that's, that's, and I'm, I'm sort of, you have to be absurd with the, with. With some things, but I, I, I agree that one probably could use some um. Some tightening up just because it's more, disability is more, has become over the years more of a legal definition. The other ones.
Well, it is a legal definition.
Right. Um, anything else, Rosie? So Rosie, what I'm hearing you say is that you're, you're saying for this sex, the sexual orientation, you don't, you don't think we need, you don't want to have further. You don't want to, you want to keep it simple and not have further definition of those three things, right? You just want to leave sex, sexual orientation and gender.
And that, that's, that seems like um. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, it's, it's perfectly fine to me. Gender expression wants to be elucidated here. That's, that's fine. I just think we need to find a space for just male or female at birth. Sex as defined at birth gives, gives some um. Gravitas to, to women's saying, women's rights. And, and, and not. And not everybody else. Women are special. Have, have special needs because they have been discriminated and continue to be discriminated. And that's my argument that there needs to be a place in this where we just. Give gravitas to that definition.
Darcy, any other recommendations?
Uh, no, I um. I agree with Rosie. I, I think we have to make room. For women somehow, some way and, and be specific. I, again, I would rather we go to a very simple, two paragraph, three paragraph. Proclamation. That's, that's what I'm going to be pushing for. I don't think it has to be so um. Long, hard to read, not accessible to young people who are, you know, might be elementary school kids. They're the ones that need to really. Learn about this stuff too. So um, I don't know, it just, it just. It just seems so um. Angry. The document seems angry to me. And I don't think we need that. I think it should be more open, accessible. Um, easier to read and understand. And um, you know, if they want to go further than that, uh. Fine, but for uh right now, I think that's what I would prefer.
Uh, we'll go, Jamie, go in with you. So Sean, any other recommendations? Sean, sorry.
He's on mute.
He's thinking.
Thinking hard. Um, sorry, I couldn't find my mute button for some reason. I'm not used to the Zoom. Um. I was just on some of the links that um Jared had sent or Nancy, whoever put them on the bottom of the document. And there's links to the CDC. And which defines disability similarly, but a little bit more in depth. And there's another link to the. I'm, I want to say it's the WHO, but I don't think it is that just is defining disabilities a little bit more. There's a little bit more detail in there, but. Maybe we can pull from those resources that are linked. Um, if we wanted to find that disability section more, but. No real changes for me other than just the moving the kind of footnotes or. Making them redundant and putting them in the, in the definitions page.
Uh. So Jamie, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you finish it and then sort of as you, as a member of both of these groups between the select and. And the Human Rights Commission. I mean, so what, what recommendation do you make and what do you think should be our next steps? Because you guys have done a lot of hard work on this thing and I, I think it's a good document. My opinion, everybody has their opinion. And my feeling is a good document. I'd like to. And I think it's an improvement to it. So I'd like to sort of. and I think it's an improvement to it. So I'd like to sort of improve a little bit more and vote on it at some point. But what are your, what's your recommendations and what do you think our next step should be?
Uh, yeah. So I would be fine with uh certainly just having a, a separate appendix. I don't think there's any need to have uh the footnotes on the first page with actual definitions. Um. I think of my original idea, which I, I'm not wedded to, i- is that because the term religion can be misleading, although it's not as a, as a legal or a policy statement of our executive board, it doesn't need to have a footnote. But I acknowledged that the only people who might know that religion also refers to atheists are those that read court cases and other human, and are in the human rights world. So I thought I was, you know, it would help to make that specific on the first page, right? Um, I don't particularly, you know, I don't have a strong opinion that it must be there. Um. Uh, I do think um it is an appropriate human rights statement consistent with many human rights statements championed by women. And it isn't, this is in no way compared to many other human rights statements championed by women in some, somehow anti-woman or not woman enough. Um. And I think there's sort of some other narrative going on here that uh relates to that. So.
Next steps.
I would like to see, I, I'd like to see more diversity on this commission. I would like to see more diversity on this commission. I think, I think it would be, um, it would, it would, because right now there is none.
Oh, there's.
Yeah, there, we have no diversity. We really need to work on that. And um you know, I, I think it would be beneficial to the town.
There's, there's one opening right now.
So we can get somebody.
Yeah. Okay. I know, I think it's a lot of hard work. You guys have done it. I think that you don't have to do anything. I think that, that we can that we, we're gonna, we're gonna, I don't think you need to do anything between now and next meeting because it's up, it's up to us sort of decide where we put things and how we do it. So I think we need to read it and make recommendations before you do anything. So I think you've done your part. I think it's um and I think we need to do some work internally amongst ourselves, and then we'll come back to you after our next meeting and make some recommendations. Thank you for presenting today. Um, Jared and Ann and, and um Nancy. Uh, and I'll let you, and Ann, if you want to, Jared or Ann or Nancy, if you want to finish with anything, I'll let you have the last thirty seconds here.
I'll, I'll just quickly say thank you all for the time this evening and for your um lengthy thoughtful process on this. Um, we'll look forward to hearing your considerations and work to do whatever you all decide is best for moving forward here.
Thanks, Jared, for doing our research.
Thank you.
It was by no means all me. Um, there was a, a subcommittee that worked on this, so.
Well, to everyone involved, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jan. And thanks, Nancy, as always.
All right, um, next thing on, on the agenda is to update our budget ATM calendar review and discuss. So Joe, I know you have that calendar if you want to pull that up, but is, and point out any changes or milestone dates we need to hit. Yeah, you have, you have them in red, so.
Yeah, pretty much. The ones in red are the, are the big uh joint meetings coming up. Um, I have one highlighted, one eighteen, twenty-two, two is a uh, this, this one might change a little bit. We're discussing this with the Capitol Committee right now, but um, uh, for the most part, this kind of lays out what we think um are the meetings that have been agreed to going forward. Um, uh, and, and the different dates, the things will happen in order to get ourselves ready for a town meeting. Um, and I just, obviously some of this moved because we had some, some fluctuation in December, so I wanted to make the board aware of it. And if you had changes, the one, for the change you want to make, make, this can also continue to be amended, but uh we just wanted to kind of get some dates that we could all uh kind of circle and, and know what was coming up. So um, at, with your input, we had changed the uh, the presentation of the budget to um the Board of Selectment and the Finance and Advisory Committee to uh one twenty-nine, twenty-two, two. And Bill mentioned earlier that the next second, which is good because we didn't, we only used to have one, but the second joint five boards committee with the uh School Committee and both towns, Boards of Selectment and Finance and Advisory Committees is uh next week on uh Thursday, on the thirteenth. So.
I think we all got invited for that in your email over the last couple of days.
Yeah, important on that. Everybody's invite is uh individualized, so please check and make sure you got in your email. If you don't see it, please check your junk folder in case it bounced there. Because that way then when you go to use that link to get in, they'll know it's you and you'll be put onto the panel instead of being put into uh, into the ballot, into the audience. So um, that the School Committee does theirs a little differently with the webinars, and so I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay. Anything else, Joe, or anybody else on the board have any comments on the uh schedule?
Uh, on, so on the twenty-ninth, what, what's the time for that meeting?
Um, I think we're gonna go back to what would traditionally have been a Saturday morning and night, beginning at nine AM. Um, I know one year we did it on a Tuesday night, and last year I think we went back to doing it on, on Saturday at nine AM. Um, my recommendation at this point is going to be to do it all via Zoom. Um, uh. If, but if the boards wanted to, we could have the FinCom and the Select Board in the meeting room and have all the departments participate by Zoom. I just think that with the current uh case counts and everything else, it'd be better to minimize the number of people that are in the memorial room together. So you can either choose to be there together, or you can zoom in, or we could do everybody Zoom, uh whatever the board, boards think is best, but uh I I'd like this to try to minimize the number of people in the room at one.
Yes.
Could we go to, could we use a different room? That might be larger than the memorial room, maybe, I don't know, the library in, in their um, in their meeting room?
I could check with the library, um, and see if the, if they can. I'm concerned, I'll have to also check with HW Cam. We want to make sure uh, we were hoping to be able to do this live and have it be over HW Cam, and the memorial room is uniquely set up to do that. There isn't another space that can do that. So. But I can check with Bill, um, Bill Melville, HW Cam, and see if he can pull it on with library.
Or I, I don't know, the, the COA is, is a pretty big space as well, but, but they don't have um AV capability. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. All right, we'll get these dates in your calendar. It's gonna be a busy few months here. Um, vote to open warrant for annual town meeting. Show anything more formal than that? Do we need to vote on a specific or just a motion to open a warrant?
No, we don't have a lot of new, we don't have a lot of articles yet. We know we'll have the kind of traditional ones. Bill's from prior year, we have one for a very small amount of money uh so far. Um, you'll have Bill's profit prior year, you'll have all the normal, regular financial articles. Uh, we don't know of any, in fact, I've been told by the planning board they're not planning on having any zoning articles this year. Um, there may be um some CPC articles coming forward, but we don't have anything right now to put in front of you. We just need an official vote to open the warrant and.
Can I make a motion? I move, I move that we open the warrant for annual town meeting twenty-twenty-two.
So move for a second? Second, Sean?
Second, sorry, I meant to say second. I'm rewinding time for a second there, I guess.
Uh, I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Sean Farrell?
Uh, Sean Farrell, yes.
Uh, Jamie?
Amy Knutson, I.
Rose, Rosie?
Jamie Knutson, oh my gosh.
We're losing it.
Rosie Kennedy, I.
Darcy.
Darcy Dale, I.
I've, I've called Sean, I've called Sean Jamie Farrell before, so. William Olson, I. All right, so somehow, Joe, in there, we officially voted to open the warrant.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, so.
This is what happens when you don't, we don't sit next to each other.
All right, so the next thing we want to talk about obviously is the most important thing that is, is, has been a, a on all of our agendas for a long time now. We have to figure out a way to make it happen. So we're going to reconstitute the um sorry, I'm gonna get the name.
Building Committee?
Yeah, well, that was a longer name, but Town Hall Renovation and, and the town, yeah, the Town Hall Building Committee. Um, I think it had a longer name last time, but um I think so. What do we constantly, because we want to, we need to figure out what it's gonna be, because we, we have a lot of things going on. We have safety, we have ADA, we have services, we have employees, um, we have environment, we have all, all these things that we, and we have town infrastructure that's um, that every day gets worse, that we don't fix it, and it's gonna be, it gets more expensive every day. We don't do something to it. So we need to, obviously, last time I thought we, I thought we had a really good plan and we had a really good design and, and input from people who attended town meetings over the years, but we didn't get was the contents of people who weren't involved in, in those meetings. And so I think our goal is to sort of more of a outreach to the people who who have other things in town they want to do and to make sure we can do both. It's not one of the others, not Town Hall or the school. It's, we, we need to find a plan to do both because we're gonna have to do both. So um so I think we need to reconstitute the, the Town Hall Committee and invite people into the committee who were, who were against it last time and figure out why they were against it and get them to uh compromise, like we talked about earlier today. We need to compromise and, and for it. And if we need to get something on the agenda, help, help develop the you know, there's other things that we do in town, like turf fields and we can't do that committee to make this work. And those are the type of things we need to do as a, as a, as a community. So those are my thoughts. My thoughts are, I want to reconstitute the committee, I'd like to be part of it this time. Um, and I'd like to bring in people who had voted against this last time to, to find out what we can do to get, put the right program and the right project and other products in front of the town that are important to town people, because it's important that we make investments in our kids, in our community, in our future. So, and, and it involves everybody from our employees to our residents, to our, you know, to our future residents, who people might want to move here. So um, so I don't know, sure, uh, and I know Darcy and Rosie, you were very involved in this and spent a lot of time and and hours on this, so I hope that you continue to uh be involved in it and we can figure out what it, what it means and how we meet and what the next steps are.
Now, that's, that's an interesting perspective, Bill. Um, you're, you're bringing in some, some other facets and, and I, I think that's, that's very good. Um, we, we have the design at this point. We need to um find um the money. I think um this was pretty much put together as a, as a bare bones project. There wasn't, there wasn't um any, any fluff or um superfluous um building accoutrements to, to this. So, so it's just a matter of how much has the price escalated? Um, so um, I, I have a question for, for you, Joe. Um, so there are some grants, of, of course, that, that the town can apply for, for this project. I mean, it's certainly not the millions of dollars, but anything that takes um the tax burden off of the citizens is certainly welcomed. So would there be somebody at Town Hall, an employee, who could help write a grant for um, for um a, a project that I have been in touch with the Cultural Council for?
Um, we don't, I mean, we don't have anybody that has that job description, and I don't have anybody that has a lot of extra time on their hands. Um, I, we do have a line item for consultants, and I, I know that a lot of towns do use consultants to help write grants, particularly if they're for a specific purpose. So I could potentially find some uh money for a consultant to help us with a particular grant. Um.
And I'm certainly willing to do a lot of the footwork myself, but, and, and somebody from the Cultural Council has offered to, to help a bit, but but I also think that um if, if there was any possibility of, of somebody helping that, that might make it um more, uh, better chances of success, I guess.
Yes, yeah. It's more of an investment.
Yes.
So I mean, I actually, I have, actually have a couple of ideas um that maybe Rosie, you and I could talk about um separately, uh, not in a meeting. Because I, I need to talk to some, I have, I do have some part-time staff that might be in favor of picking up some additional hours, um, that have writing backgrounds. And uh, you know, my, my first job in, in municipal government was uh was as grants manager, so I've got some grant experience. I, I don't have.
I was gonna say, that's, that's, that was in your, that was in your original interview. You talked about grants, so I want to put this thing.
Yeah, no, I, I, I have experience with grants and how to, how to go after them. Um, I don't have a ton of time to be able to help write them, but I can certainly help edit them and move them through the process. I know a lot about how, what we're looking for. That's actually why I, I wanted to go after the SFP plan, uh, because it's, it's an vital part if we want to seek MOD money. So um, yeah, but yeah, I fully embrace the idea of trying to get additional grant money uh into this project somehow, even if it, every little bit helps, as they say.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So Sean, and part of that, Sean, one of the things that would be interesting if we could do is, I know we've talked about this over the years, we did have another side-by-side comparison, but they talked about the CPC, if we increased our tax rate by, you know, for two to three percent, you know, we would double our, right, double our, our fund, funding from the state, which seems to be there seems to be money still left in the state funding. It would be good to see a side-by-side. I think when we, when we were trying to pass the bond, I think that the dollar was twenty-five dollars per quarter for an average house, right? It was like a hundred dollars per you know, per household. So if we compare like the, if we compare the bond at full bond at a hun, and, but if we raise the, you know, if we raise a lot of money through the CPC, you know, how does that affect the average taxpayer? I don't know if we can, if we can run those numbers side by side or not.
Yeah, and, and don't, don't quote me on this. I know we're taking minutes on this, but I think the difference in a two to a three percent surcharge on the average house was between at one point it was forty-five, but I think it's between sixty and ninety dollars a year, an increase on the surcharge. And that would increase our monies by almost half. We get about, it depends on the year with the state match with the registry of deeds and the receipts. This year we're getting thirty-five or thirty-seven percent match. In past years, we've gotten as low as seventeen, but those were in kind of the really lean years when the real estate market and building wasn't going so well. But it would basically double our money from about four hundred thousand to close to eight hundred thousand dollars. So it would, it would double the money for the most part, because you go, it happens that they, they pull out funding based on your surcharge in different rounds with the kind of big pot of money that they gather from the registry. And we would be in that second round of funding, so we would get an additional percentage of that kind of pool of money. And I think we, we collect about four hundred thousand from the town, and then we get whatever percentage of the match. So the surcharge would really go a long ways. That one percent would really go far to help with Town Hall and turf fields and any other projects we have in the future, those kind of big ticket items would really make a difference. And we can always with CPC was a citizen's petition to begin with.
Yep.
So a change in the surcharge would also have to be a citizen's petition. The CPC could endorse it. But we couldn't bring it to town meeting. And towns in the past, if you go on the CPC website, you can see towns that have started at a half a percent, a percent, move the two percent, move the three percent, and then voted it back down to two percent. So we could in, if we did, wanted to, we could raise a surcharge of three percent. And then some future date, we could bring it back to a two percent or no percent. It's up to a citizen's petition to bring it to town meeting. The only thing is that you have to collect basically years' worth of the surcharge before you get the match. So you'd have to collect for a whole year till you get a match. So there's kind of a lag year. And plus, if we bring it to town meeting, there's probably, it's probably almost two town meetings that kind of get it done to bring it, to get it started, to collect the taxes or the surcharge, and then get it, the funding on the next round. So it's, it's not like a, you voted in town meeting and it immediately happens. So you kind of have, have some foresight with how it works out.
Yeah, I think it's a year, a year, a year delay.
Ending.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Probably the quickest it would get done would be probably eight, eighteen months, maybe. You know, if you got it right at a town meeting and then you had that year of collection.
Yeah.
From the surcharge.
Jay Butler had, Jay Butler had given us some, a breakdown on what the increase would be last year. Sean, if, if you remember, and he, he did say to us that it would probably be uh, in, in realistically two to three years before you would see the, the results of increasing the surcharge. So.
Yeah, you, can you, and the problem is, you can't, you can't use CPC money to pay down alone. You have to, you, you can only use it to fund the original project, or can you pay for the project? Can you pay for the project cost later?
We could, well, CPC, we have, we have bonding capacity. We, we couldn't pay in the past. Anything that's happened before the grants, we can't pay for.
Right.
So we can, we can bond a project or we can pay for it outright with anything that's in our, our kind of kitty or our, our
cash.
Our, our bank account there from.
But you could bond more based on future, you could bond based on future, as we did for the Donovan Field, right? You bonded.
Right, right. So like, so for instance, this ATM will, even if we don't have grants come forward, CPC will still be on the warrant because we have to pay those bonding, those, the premiums and, you know, that, that fee. Bonding those the premiums and you know that that fee from. You know, the Sagamore Purchase and some other things that are still on our 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 debt there. So we still have to vote to to pay those. Charges or fees, I guess, the loans.
But at least with bonding, it comes off every year, it more and more and more comes off your tax rate, so it's not like an override. It's the it's the opposite of an override. It comes off and then and then you have bonding compass capacity for other um initiatives.
Right, and and with the Sagamore Hill Purchase, we spent cash and bonded.
Yes, yeah, combination.
We could do a combination of that to bring down stuff and right now the the rate of bonds. I don't wanna say they're giving money away, but at the moment, they're very, very low rates.
Yeah, that's why it was so disappointing.
So very low. I I think if I can kind of chime in a little bit more about Town Hall, this funding, it all comes down to money, right? You know, we're talking about CPC money and stuff like that, I think. If slash when we reconstitute the Town Hall Restoration Committee, Town Hall Committee, Town Hall Building Committee, whatever the iteration is of it. I mean, I think we've already got basically. Pretty much shovel ready kind of stuff. We just need to work on.
Financing.
Getting people to understand the the reason why we need Town Hall, but also the money that we're gonna be spending on it. You know, we have to think about grants, as was mentioned before, but we also have to think about maybe some fundraising, some other kind of way to. Alleviate some of that tax burden. I mean, that was one of the comments at Town Meeting was. What kind of fundraising have you done? And Town Hall isn't a glorious thing to fundraise for. It's not like a park or something like that where people.
Yeah, most communities don't fundraise for Town Halls.
I don't know any that have done.
Right.
You know, maybe if we approach. You know, Institute for Savings, they're now a Hamilton entity. Um other places like that that are in town or even private funding, I'm sure someone has an affi-. Affinity for Town Hall, that might wanna give something and you know, some 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 things do buy a brick programs for donations and stuff like that. If you get your name on a brick at the front of the Town Hall or something, you know, maybe there's some creative way we can do some fundraising. It's not a very popular thing with Town Halls, but we gotta kind of think outside the box to show people that we're really trying to.
It's probably more symbolic than it would be actually, you know, useful, but.
Right, may maybe we raise a hundred thousand dollars, but it's still a hundred thousand dollars less than people will be paying out of their pockets for taxes, so.
No, no, I agree. I think I think every everything like. Rosie said, I think Rosie said it, but every every dollar matters, right? So every dollar we raise somewhere else saves taxpayer dollars, so. And I think if we showed investment in the community, the community was showing them, I know, that we're willing to sort of reduce costs. I think it's all part of the. The the plan here, so.
Maybe I should talk to Kevin uh about this old house doing this old Town Hall.
There you go.
Sell sponsor sell sponsorships at Town Hall. The fifteen walnut, the fifteen walnut room or something like that. No, I think so. So Joe, I mean, I think we're sitting, I don't know what we need to do officially, Joe. I think that we need to start, you know, it's a new year, it's. We should start meeting if it's once a month right now and putting these ideas on paper, separate meetings, separate discussion. So um.
Do you do you wanna advertise for a new committee? Do you wanna start out with a uh? With a group, um maybe a subset of the Board of Selectmen and invite a couple of other um people to participate and um. Figure out where to go from there. You tell me, you tell me what you want me to do next, so.
So so I would just I would just make the comment that the only thing financially that we need to do is just rebid this. And if if um. And maybe people who were on the committee before who have a lot of knowledge about that might be. Helpful in terms of of getting that done since they know the project inside inside and out.
Yeah, I think there's two parts. I think I think we I think rebid is part of, I think the other part is. Is really to outreach the community and and the campaign to. To sort of the fundraise, the the building more consensus to gain understanding of what what the community, wh- what the misunderstanding was. I think that's part of the. I think it's a fifty fifty effort, so I think we need both of those represented. Joe, you were gonna make a comment?
If I could, please, um the uh. I think one of the problems for us last time too was the the bidding it, right? Generally, we shouldn't put this out to bid until we have the funds or we have, we know how to have the, know know how we're gonna have the funds because. The bids can only be held for a certain amount of time. We we got extremely lucky and very uh favorable circumstances last time that the. The low bidder did agree to hold it for four months. That doesn't usually happen legally. They don't have to hold it for more than thirty days. That was why it was so short time between uh the test special time meeting vote in November and the election in December because we we didn't have. A lot of time legally. After we were so close by less than a hundred votes, the the bidder agreed to hold his bid for us, which. I could said again is very unusual. Um and then we went out and lost by the same number of votes again, so um that was all unfortunate, but I I. Urge us to not repeat that mistake. I think that we should line up. Um town should line up how you wanna proceed, get the support, get the vote, know that you have the money and then go to bid.
But how do we know how 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 do we know what dollar amount to put in?
You 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 can do it, not to you you do a not to exceed amount. Um that's usually what happens with school projects and other projects like this. You do you do a not to exceed amount. So you you ask the voters that are we allowed allowed to do that exclusion, not to exceed X amount of dollars and that. Excuse me, that gets you what you need uh to do it, but the way we did. Yeah, the way we did it last time kind of handcuffed us a little bit, made us have to um kind of rush to get votes. They had tried to rush to do campaigns as opposed to really laying out for folks what this is gonna do for the town, why we need it. Why it's necessary, in other words, convince people. And then, once we have enough people convinced, that's when we can go out to bid and because we know we have the money. That's just by recommendation.
Now, that's, I mean, that's typically how it's been done in the past for different things, so. That makes sense. I mean, at least now we have a a bid for a baseline that we know. Ballpark what it's what it's gonna be, you know, if that is if. Things aren't continuing to skyrocket with construction materials, but.
Joe, can we keep any of the um? Our per money for anything related to the Town Hall for ADA compliance or anything?
Some towns are using, I know that there's a town uh using it for their gazebo, another town is using it to restore a library or to. Build or redo something to their library, so I know they're using ARPA funds for for such things.
Infrastructure.
Yes, yeah. It would be good if maybe Mr. McGee or Joe could look into that.
Okay, we we had, I you know, I I've got a I've got an even better idea. We've got um. We've got an ability to contract with uh an auditing firm, it's but it's gonna specialize in ARPA reporting um through M A P C. I'll I'll get Powers and Sullivan to come in and make a presentation to us sometime in the next month or so, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I know we don't have a whole lot left, but again, wherever we could. See if there's anything that would be. Be super.
Okay, I'll 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 have. Powers and Sullivan put together something and come in and and talk to us about what what ARPA can and can't be used for, so.
So I guess, so I guess my goal. And everyone's gonna weigh in and give me how we how we accomplish this, but you know, by the end of January, so the third or fourth week of this of month, we have a. Meeting that that um oh, I was open to the public, but but inviting the, you know, the previous Town Hall Committee as well as all the board of. Selectmen almost a joint, a joint meeting and we talk about, you know, who should be on a committee moving forward and. And what next steps are. And put a little calendar together.
Dylan, sorry, I had a cough here. Um what 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 do you wanna do that next meeting? You want, is that in February or is it the next meeting?
I would say, I would say that, you know, either the third or fourth fourth week of January. So we advertise it next week and then we have it. You know, in a couple weeks after that, and we invite the previous board as well as the Board of Selectmen have a joint meeting.
So this is this is a separate from a regular Board of Selectmen?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And I'll reach out to people that I would like to attend that, you know, that were involved in some of the. Um opposing views.
Good idea.
Maybe give a tour.
And may and Sean, maybe you can uh. Get some fundraisers there. CPC maybe, we can talk about that process and how much they're willing to bond, that made sense to bond more based on.
And so going to get so much more money this year, Sean.
Yeah, right. And I think we just finished a month or so ago, the CPC kind of our annual. Report. Policy stuff, it's all on the CPC website. I if I'm, it's like a sixty five page document, it's a. It's a it's a riveting read if you wanna read it, but there is information there about the different surcharges and what we collect and what we get and everything like that. So if you are curious about it, there's plenty of information there. If you don't see there, you can always go to the CPC website at the state and find out more.
Uh anything else in that discussion for anybody? All right, uh at last, a last minute agenda is the Board of Health update. So um so Joe.
Since I'm the liaison, you want me to um give you an update on when the next meeting is and um what they're gonna be working on? Uh I've been invited to the eleven on the eleventh um next week. Uh we're going to be um discussing how to distribute the tests. That are going to be coming in, the COVID tests and um figuring out priorities and all that, so it should be very interesting. And now I think Joe needs um to um speak up.
Sure, thanks, Darcy. I wanted to just read a a little brief statement uh that we put together. In reviewing the decision making process and the rollout of the distribution, the process could have been more collaborative than it was, and the test kits could have been made more widely available. At a critical time when people were looking for kids to be able to feel safe before and after gathering at the holidays. Missing from this timeline of events is a comprehensive communications plan for informing the both the Board of Selectmen and the general public about the tests. How they would be made available and to whom. This is an oversight that I take responsibility for. The lack of information about the kits and the process that was used to distribute the kits. In an environment where many residents were searching for an efficient, convenient way to get tested prior to the holidays. Created an opportunity for speculation and led to a spread of misinformation mostly via via social media. Going forward, we will be sure to share this kind of information directly to the select board in real time. And create a system for quickly and accurately updating the general public about opportunities to access to access resources that are made available through the state. On Wednesday, December twenty ninth, the state notified us that it has negotiated contracts with rapid test manufacturers. That will enable us to purchase these important healthcare tools at a reasonable cost going forward, so that we can assist in making them more widely available. Our health department staff is already working to make such purchases purchases as quickly as possible. Thanks, uh may I add one little quick thing? This is not um going off script. It was just a a bit of a opportunity earlier today. Town bits which did reach out, um offered to uh you know, be the lead on a purchasable, very large number of. Kits that would allow us to potentially purchase the middle lower cost. Um Danvers has also had a similar overture, so our staff. Following procurement guidelines is looking at one of those two ways to hopefully have. Kits available sometime in the next seven to ten business days. Um. Obviously, we'll be discussing that with the Board of Health and the Darcy is a representative of uh the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Health will. Make sure everybody's aware of of what's what's being discussed. These would be kits that would be available for all residents in town, so.
Wonderful.
Topic, but same topic. You're talking about procurement. Is it? Five thousand or ten thousand you need bit three bids for, is it?
We uh if we purchase them together through the state contract, we don't need to go through those.
If they're on the state vendor list, it's fine. Okay, perfect.
So Joe, so Joe, you you didn't read, you went to you, you read a a brief part of the statement, but but the entire statement is a very. Very thoughtful and methodical process. Obviously, it was done, you know, with a. We trusted the, you know, Board of Health and and then they talked to the state, you know, DPH, Mass DPH Department, so. And we we did go through a process that was distributed as as we thought appropriately and into multiple organizations.
No, it wasn't. That's the problem, and I think we probably should just let it lie, I think.
Well, I I I just don't want misinformation out there, Darcy, that we just keeping away, willing, there was a whole pro- methodical process that was done. If people don't agree with the processes, that's a different discussion, but.
Well, regular order wasn't observed, and when that happens, things go bad. So what happened was. Um our test kits didn't stay in town. They actually went out of town. The majority of the test kits were not available to people here, and that's what it was for, and it was up to the select board to make the decision. Um so we all know this now, so. Um you know, it wasn't up to the DPH, it was up to the select board and the communities. And I and I think we are past it and. Should probably move on unless you wanna start um. Uh an accounting of where everyone, where all those tests went, cuz I don't know. There is no accounting. It's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I I I I'm not gonna debate this with you right now, and if we need if we need to have a discussion, but but we've 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 documented everything. We have every document, we know how many kits we got, and we know where the kits were distributed to and and it was distributed with the. Direction of the mass DPH as well as our our local Board of Health, so. And 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 there have been a few people have that, you know, that have reached out in. To to, you know, to find out where they can get their test kits, but um. But moving forward, like you said, we're going to uh if if we get additional kits, we're going to. Do a different process, but you know, we we we've relied, we've relied on our on our Board of Health for the last eighteen months. Um without much interference from the Board of Selectmen to do the right thing to our town and keep our town safe and healthy, and they've done that quite well, so I'm not gonna. Say anything negative about our Board of Health and how they have done.
Board of Health is wonderful. The Board of Health is wonderful and they've done a really good job. But we wanna make sure that the kits stay here.
So one of the one of the things that I wanted to mention as well is that um there's there's such a. There there's such a um. Need for for testing and stay and sites throughout Massachusetts just do not have the capacity or the staff. To provide all that testing and as that happens, we in the medical field are relying more and more on home. Antigen tests, so I'm I'm especially excited that. Um people will have this opportunity to to know whether they are positive in a very short amount of time, so. That's going to be a really big help in terms of slowing the spread of of this strain of COVID.
Alright, so so Joe, during the original testing phase, you know, that we had at the high school that we had funded. Originally, the concept was that if your health insurance would would reimburse. You could, you would pay for it, and we actually had paperwork to fill out for people to filter out. By the end of the day, I don't think we ever. Charge people's health insurance cuz it became too, it became a whole different process, right? That became too.
Yeah, it was a couple of different things that led to it a lot. You know, we had the kids available, people were coming up and saying that they had symptoms when they didn't have something. Town had kind of said that if you have symptoms, then we won't charge you or and people were coming up and saying that they had symptoms. But they, even if they didn't, we didn't have a way to challenge them on that. The uh one of the things that was that is being discussed by some of the other towns and and I know that. Um I know that the health department staff talked to the Chair of the Health, the Board of Health today. Um the the idea is being that the uh the kits are two tests and one kit, they they're, we expect they're gonna cost us about ten dollars each. The thought was that um we might seek. Um a port, having a portal, have a way for people to pay for the ten dollar for the test kits to take home. Uh in extreme circumstances, if somebody doesn't have the ability to pay, we could um, you know, find a way to make some tests uh available for free. But ten dollars isn't really a large sum of money and it would uh. It would help us not see all the tests just leave, you know, the week we get them just because people think that they can get one for free and not um. So. Yeah, right, if you if you don't need a test, you just come down to get your free test even though you don't need it and kind of order that kind of defeats the purpose a little bit too. So the idea being that if the if we can just recoup what it costs us, um then the tests are available. And you know, as we get that money in, if we are running out of tests, we can use that, those funds to turn around and buy more tests. So we're not constantly just using ARPA money and and having it go out the door to buy more tests. We could use a sum of ARPA money to purchase. Uh a a a number of kits as we as those get depleted. People are paying for them, so we can go out and buy them again. Again, this is all about accessibility and availability of availability of the tests. So we're basically, you know, providing another block in the supply chain so that if CVS runs out, there are some available town if. You can't get them uh from, you know, other locations, the town has them, there's a backstop for um a number of tests, but. We'd also be able to take advantage of the state pricing, which is much better than some of those other outlets have, so.
Yeah, I think um the drugstore's cost charge anywhere from twenty five to thirty five dollars for. For two tests, and that's a lot of money if you've got two kids and two adults who need to be tested. So the fact that the town would be charging ten dollars makes it much more affordable, so that's that's a really good thing. And I wholeheartedly support that.
Per kit, so it'd be five dollars per test.
Well, yeah, but the kid, but each kid comes with two tests in it, you can't break them up. Well, yeah, but the kit, but each kit comes with two tests in it. You can't break them up. So.
Okay.
Your memo, Joe, your memo says the previous contract allowed for five dollars per test kit. That's a previous contract.
Five dollars, yeah, it was a five dollars, I think it was for five dollars per test, which the kit, the tests come in sets of two. So.
It's got, it had kits, so it's a little confusing. But, but I, I, I mean, I, I agree. I think that having testing accessible
Yeah.
will help because if people can't get tested, don't get tested, they just say, I don't have it because I couldn't get tested and they're out in the world, right? Where if they could get a test for five bucks, they would probably test and they would, and I, and I think it's, you know, the goal is that this thing is going to ramp up and ramp down. But I think over the next month, it's important for us to have these test kits available to our community. And I think if they're available at five or ten dollars versus twenty, twenty-five, that's, that's a huge improvement. I, do you need direction from us to be able to go and do that? I think that.
We can, you've already authorized some money from the ARPA funds to be used for ongoing pandemic related expenses. This would certainly qualify in that arena. Once we figure out the best municipality to partner with, we're kind of leaning towards Ipswich just because we're already partnered with Ipswich and the, and the G CAC COVID vaccination program. So Rachel Lee and the folks in Ipswich have been, been a big part of keeping that, of getting that going and keeping it going. So we've already, already kind of have a natural relationship with them in that, in that regard. Wenham's in, in, involved in that as well. So and I know they've already committed to buying us some tests, which we told them we'd be willing to buy a portion of those tests at a certain cost. I think we were talking about two thousand to start. And I know that that was what the new health department director, Dennis Palazzo, has had a discussion with David Smith about. So that's the direction we're leaning in. I'm not there yet, but I'm sure Darcy will have more information after the board of health meeting next week too. So.
But I think, I, I, yeah, I think we take a, a straw poll here, a litmus test from the board. I would say that it'd be helpful, but I would say I, I would be, I mean, obviously we need to look at how, how many tests you have the eighteen hundred ninety tests, how many of those, how quickly did they go? And so we could sort of make a, you know, in, in how many, you know, requests have you had since then? So we can make a, I don't want to buy way too many that we're just sitting on and have used money. But if we, like you said, we could buy it incrementally. I think that makes sense. So I'm in favor of buying them incrementally. If we can actually cut the costs by, for our community by almost a third.
Joe, could the communities that ended up with our test return when they buy theirs, could they repay us back for the ones that they were given?
They were not communities. They were individuals that were, that, that got services in this community. So that would be hard to.
Well, we gave them, we gave them to Topsfield and we gave them to Essex and we gave them to Wenham.
We can certainly, we can certainly talk to all three communities about.
That would be helpful.
When they buy a test, could they, could they share back? And we, we've got good relationships with all those communities. So I'll definitely have that conversation.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm in favor. Yeah. You know, Sean and Jamie, just give your thoughts. And if we think it's we want to authorize them to come up with a program to buy kits and then be able to sell them to our community for five or ten dollars versus the twenty-five to thirty that you see in the stores.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely would want to make sure that there I guess that or I would at least voice my, my preference to manage it in such a way where the they were distributed by the state based on, or I'm, I guess I'm talking about the past. So.
Yeah.
But it is important that they be available for the people who really need them, not those who are savvy enough to see what a great deal right? So.
Yeah, they could turn it, buy them for ten and turn around and sell them for thirty five.
And to have them available for those that, you know, you know, that aren't able to afford the ten dollars.
Right. Those underserved populations.
Well, that's always a goal. That's, that's important. Absolutely. But I think one of that, one of the things that we need to to base the future sale on is, is medical necessity rather than as, as I don't know which one of our boards had this, but just because they're free, come down and get them. That's, that's not a good use of, of the product.
A portion of the demand for the test kits was the holidays, people wanting to travel and see family, which is.
Well, they'll still be, they'll still be needing those tests because they're coming back now and they might be a five to ten day lag. So they're going to need them now or in the next couple of days.
Yeah. Do, do you know what? And I'll tell you, I, I, where, where I work, of course, there's a high, a high volume of COVID patients. And in, in one clinic, there was a forty-one percent positive rate in COVID tests last week. So I, we did not even see that during, during the first surge. Of course, we didn't have as many tests. So we don't really know what the true number was. But it's just astronomical and the more quick testing that we have available for people who, who need it for, for whatever reason, medical need, financial need, that's, that's really good. But of course, my, my vote is there should first and foremost be a medical need.
Yeah. All right. Let us know what happened to that meeting. But I think you have boards of support to buy a limited incremental amount that we can then be able to discount back to the community.
All right. Thank you.
Any other dates, any other updates from the board of health, Darcy?
Well, I, I just said we're going to be meeting on Tuesday, the eleventh at five o'clock PM and that we'll be discussing the information that we get from Joe on the purchasing the tests.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Is it that time?
I think, I wanted to, I just, let's talk about future meetings. We don't, we did particularly do it in smaller meetings, but I do want to talk about a few things for upcoming meetings. Obviously, we have a lot of meetings regarding the budgets between our budget and the school budget. So a lot of things coming for that. We have, um, we had on our agenda, the school agreement that we want, that we put a letter out to talk about that, that kind of put, put aside when we, when the superintendent left and, and then the school is stuck with a superintendent search as well as their budget problems. So I'm hoping that after town meeting and the school budget is set, we can restart those discussions. Might be good timing to do it with a new superintendent and have that the rewrite the agreement. Cause I think that as we saw that Corinne talked about, you know, a lot of things are coming to issue by not having a updated agreement. There's day, day to day activities that can't happen appropriately or efficiently or effectively as well as larger scale projects and things like that. So my goal is to start those discussions up, Joe, probably as soon as town meeting is over. So let's make sure that's on the agenda for then. I think that's the best use of time is to wait till that's over. That was mine. Anybody else have anything that we want to talk about in this meeting about future agenda items? That we can, don't talk, that we don't already discuss on our sidebar discussions?
Well, if I think of something, I'll let you know.
Yeah, I think, I think Rosemary, you're next up for the agenda setting, which will be next Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
I can't think of anything offhand. Enjoy the side, the sidewalk. We talked about the sidewalk study. I'm not sure where, where Tim has left that at. If you can put that on your, is that on your?
I can, I can have Tim, I can have Tim come back and talk to you about it. Yeah.
And then we talked about Casella last time. I don't know if the right time to go to Casella is and sort of remind them of their lack of service.
Yeah, I've already asked him to set up that meeting for when we're both back. Tim's on vacation until the sixth, a little later this week. And obviously I'm out till next Monday. So I've asked him to, when he gets back into town, to call Casella and, and schedule a meeting. Hopefully we'll have that meeting next week or, or the week after.
Can I just add a little bit to that? And, and I, I haven't had a chance to touch base with Gradle, but she's called me a few times. We've been playing phone tag, but I think if we're talking the compost pickup and stuff, I'm assuming.
Couple of things, Sean, is that?
I mean, there's that and plus another thing, but I think for me, I think the, the compost thing is maybe a I don't want to say it's a logistical, logistical might not be the right word, but I know for instance, on my street, the compost and recycling come through and then an hour or so later, the trash comes through. So there's no way for them to know if I had the compost out when the trash comes through, because many people, if my wife's home, working from home a lot, like she has been the last COVID and she pulls the cans in, then the trash can is the only thing out there. But we bring our, we, I mean, we have two compost bins, but you know, some people might not have the compost out or may have pulled it in. So I think there's a, that time lag between the trucks that's maybe causing part of the issue that they don't know if bins were out or not. I don't know if they can figure out a way to have a better overlap or some way to keep track, or maybe there's somebody to follow, like I think it was John did for a while or something like that. I just, I don't know the solution, but there has to be a better way to figure it out.
I'd say, I think you just keep your compost bin out until you get your trash picked up. But that's what I, that's what I do. But it ends up, it ends up on the ground and ends up blows down the street and then, you know.
Right. And it's, it's closest snow time. So, you know, but it's I, I don't think it's as easy as them as we think it is. Kind of, I think it.
The good thing, the good thing is I, I took a survey of my street, my neighborhood last, after Gradle made the comment, every single house, night, I did not, one was missed. Every house had a trash can and a green bin out. So.
Yeah, same on my neighborhood.
Yeah. So, so I know Gray's gone around and I believe her. She's on some street where she says less than half the people have them out there, but but I, I did not, I did not observe that yet. So.
Yeah, I, I think, I think more than just which streets were, were deficient in having their green bins out. The data supports that there's a very low compliance rate. I, I think that's more important than where I think they trust you, Molson Street as a, as an example, but it's very disappointing and Gradle. And, and both said to me that the state is looking to us as a leader in, in this program. And so we should really work to make it happen and, and figure out all the snafus. So.
Right. I mean, it's, it's not going to look good if we say that we've mandated this program and it doesn't change our numbers or make some worse. It's.
Well, it's back, right. It's, it's back down to where, where it was before we did the composting. And that's very frustrating because a lot of people have worked very hard to make this happen. And we made a commitment to, to do our best to make, to enforce it. So I, I, I think that's what her frustration was. And, and I.
Yeah, and I agree. Joe, 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 if you can give us an update on that. As well. All right.
Okay.
That time.
I, I moved that we closed for the evening. We adjourned for the evening.
Second.
Sorry.
All's in favor, Darcy Dale?
Darcy Dale, I.
Rosemary Kennedy?
Rosie Kennedy, I.
Jamie?
Jamie, it's a I.
Sean?
Sean Farrell, I.
Joe, thanks for joining us on your day off. Appreciate it.
Don't forget to, don't forget to vote.
And I.
All right. Everyone all set?
Yeah, I think so.
Hi, everybody. Thank you.